Um, the last time I heard was she was at two centimeters.
Okay.
That was like at three o'clock.
Okay, so we still got a ways to go, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh.
Okay.
That's Suzie logged in?
I'm in.
Locked in.
Okay, good, good to see you.
Hey Suzie, how are you?
Well, good.
You're okay?
Edgar said he was gonna log in, so I hope he does.
Yeah.
I keep trying to do it on my computer and I can never get on, so I have to do it on my phone.
Yeah, okay.
So we're live, just so you know, we've started recording, uh, sending it to Facebook Live and it looks like you have six people waiting to watch.
Okay.
Thank you, Vicki.
Mm-hmm.
It's uh, six o'clock, so we can get started. We do have a quorum. I wanna welcome everybody to the Lortsburg Municipal Schools Regular Board Meeting, May eighteenth, twenty twenty, at six P M via livestream. Would you all stand, please? We can say our, our pleasures, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the C S symbol of perfect friendship among minority cultures. Thank you. Again, welcome, everyone. I hope everybody's doing good under the circumstances that we're under. Right now, uh. First, uh, item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. And I will call everybody when, uh, I, to vote on these, so we can have a correct vote. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight as written?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda for May eighteenth as written. Listen.
Motion by Ms. Cole, is there a second?
Second by Eskivell.
Second by, uh, Ms. Eskivell. I'll call each one of you. Uh, Ms. Eskivell?
Hi.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries. Number three, approval of minutes, regular meeting of April twentieth, twenty twenty. There's any questions or comments, you can do it now. If not, I'll accept the motion to approve minutes of, uh, regular meeting, April twenty, uh, as written.
I'll make that motion by Eskivell.
Uh, motion by Ms. Eskivell, is there a second?
This is Suzie, I'll second.
Second by Ms. Cole.
And it looks like Edgar is on.
Okay.
I thought I saw something that popped up.
Yeah, I thought so, too, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, good, Edgar, welcome. Uh. Ms. Eskivell?
Yeah.
Aye, okay, Ms.
Sorry.
It's all right. Uh, Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries. Number four, administrative reports. Uh, before I forget, let it be known that Mr. Barrera is absent again, please. Okay, just record that, please. Okay, administrative reports, Dr. Lucas?
Right, um, you have the reports in front of you. I'll go over a little bit. Um, I know a lot of you have been getting questions about graduation.
Yes, sir.
And nothing had changed from PED. It was always, ever since day one, there are no graduations, just virtual graduations. We got a letter today, actually it was dated Friday, I received it today, that stated, uh, we can do a drive-through graduation. Um, so what that will look like will, or in the planning stages, I know Scott's meeting with him tonight, that's why he's not here. Uh, to try to come up with a way to do that. We're looking at maybe doing something at the baseball field. Um, and the tentative date for that is gonna be the fifth of June. Uh, that may change after tonight, but as soon as I get more information, I will email you and, and let you know.
So Mr. Robertson will, will discuss this with the parents tonight, you said?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, he's had weekly meetings with the parents.
Right.
Keep coming up with different ideas, and then he comes to me and then I say, well, you know, unless PED changes, we have to stick with just virtual graduation.
Right.
But they did change, so now we can do something a little differently.
Okay, now, now, did everybody get that email that Dr. Luca sent us just, uh, you know, this afternoon about the, the graduation?
Yes, as well as Mr. Ginn.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Ginn sent that out. That's where I got it from. I didn't get it from the Secretary of Education. I got it from Mr. Ginn.
Oh, I thought it was PED, I'm sorry.
Well, it was PED, PED sent it out Friday, but for whatever reason, um.
You didn't get it till today?
Right.
Oh, okay. Does Mr. Robertson have a copy of that, Dr. Lucas? He does? And I hope he shares it with the parents.
Uh, he should. I mean, that was the intention. I mean, I called him and let him know if that guidance was there.
Okay.
Can do a graduation following those guidelines.
Right, so hopefully he. Go ahead.
No, it's Edgar. Is there any way that we might be able to look into how is it that animus, I, I mean, animus probably is most likely because of how many students they have graduating, but I also heard that T R C had a graduation last night.
If they, if they're having like real graduations, it's going against the PED, what PED is telling us.
And, and who decides that?
Uh, well, the superintendent, I'm not really, I mean, and as a board, I guess you could direct me to have a, but, you know, that's not something I'm willing to do. I mean, 'cause that just puts a big target on your back, or PED is, you know, um, I mean, we're violating their rules. I mean, that's what they're there for.
Um, okay, on this graduation in T R C, this is Morelos talking, uh, on, on the graduation in T R C, how was it done, Edgar? Do you have any idea?
I have no clue, sir. I just heard that it, it was, there was a graduation done, so I wanted to see if, um, uh, Mr. Lucas could, uh, Dr. Lucas could check into it to see how it was done. Um, the, the, I, just from speaking to different parents, I, I don't think there's no parents that agree with the drive-through graduation. Um, I think they want more, more, something more like a ceremony, and I, I, I personally think that if, that we could do this in the stadium and have social distancing, it's a big enough stadium using both sides of the features, um, separating everybody far enough, um, I, I think something is doable. Now, I, I think that should it happen like by the end of the month? No, maybe we could give it another two weeks.
Well, and that's why.
Reevaluate the, the, the situation, maybe June fifteenth, and try to figure out, but, um, some parents had the idea of maybe Fourth of July, doing a big celebration when a lot of different people come into town, um.
Well, and that, and that's why Scott's doing the parent meeting. He'd been having them weekly, so. You know, he's had them every Monday, uh, via, uh, Google meets with any parent that wants to meet. Um, so those ideas can be brought up to him, but if, if you read those guidelines, that's what right now we are limited to follow. So if we have one during the timeframe that those guidelines apply, that's what we have. Not, not opposed to, I mean, I don't mind having a graduation in August. If that's when the sanctions lift, then we can do a full-fledged graduation. I'm all for a full-fledged graduation.
Well, well, I think August is like the beginning of a new school year, so I think it's just, but maybe looking at, maybe like in two weeks or so, and, and seeing how, how things go and in the most respectful way to anyone poss, I mean, anyone, i- if they don't wanna attend, they don't feel safe, don't attend, but also don't take away from other people. Just don't take it away from other people, especially these students that have worked hard for it, but we, but I just don't feel like how some of us could say no, um, and we don't have those graduating students. And I get it, we should take preventative measures. I, but I, I think, uh, I just think saying no and choosing one way right now, um, it's not.
Well, well, it has never been one way. Um, it has never been one way, and, and, and we've always had the option, and that's what I've always said, we can have a graduation as soon as the situation allows us to have a graduation. It's not even if they have the limited graduation now, and then in July we can do a full one, we'll do a full one. It's not a one or the other, or anything like that. It is strictly, we're following PED guidelines, which comes in order from the governor. That is.
Yes, I understand. This is Morelos talking. I, I think Edgar, that I think we're all in the same boat, that we wanna do something for these seniors, 'cause they do appreciate it. I mean, they do, uh, need to have something, and, and I appreciate everybody's, uh, opinion here. Real quick, if you wanna, uh, say something, 'cause I know I'm for anything and everything that we can do for these students, okay, but we gotta do it the right way. I think if we play it by ear, after today's meeting with Mr. Robertson, maybe you can get a better idea of how we can do it and when and where. So let's see what happens with his meeting today. It's, he's having it right now at six, so let's see what happens with him and, and if, and if we need to call a special meeting just for this, maybe we can, I don't know, but like I said, I'm for graduation. I think these kids deserve it, and we can go from there, but let's play it by ear, yes, with, uh, the right things to do, though, okay? That's my opinion.
Yeah, no, I agree, and I think after June first, we'll be able to figure out too what the new, uh, state mandate will be.
Right, but the governor should have an announcement that end of May. And if she releases, you know, reduces restrictions then, 'cause right now, the date's set for June fifth.
Yes.
Okay.
This is Suzie. I know that, um, Silver City is doing a drive-through. They're following that order, and they're doing theirs on, on Thursday.
So in the, and, and the talk that I have been getting is, we're not gonna, we're gonna kind of modify the drive-through, and that'll be around the baseball field, and we will have like a table out there, and so when we call a student, we're gonna allow that student and his parents to walk up to get their diploma.
Okay.
I have another district. Hybrid. I don't know if it follows exactly the guidelines, but I think that's something that we may be able to work out.
I have another district that does something similar to what Dr. Lucas just said, and then what they did is they hired a vendor. It's like a week-long thing. It's a bigger district, but they're filming everything so that at the end of it, they can put it all together and give every student basically a combined commencement ceremony. But that way they can walk, get their diploma, the parents can see it, they can take pictures, and they just kind of stutter it throughout the day so that they meet these state guidelines as far as number of people.
Okay, well, like I said, I think after, this is Morelos again, if, uh, see what happens with the meeting tonight with Mr. Robertson and his parents, and, uh, go from there, would, we will have a better idea of what we might be able to do.
Yes, sir.
That's, okay, so.
Mr. Morelos, and just to add, uh, the, the parents are, are very happy with Mr. Robertson, being in contact with him and, and doing everything he can, uh, to help them out.
Right, yes, and, and anyway, so, uh, any questions on the administrative reports? Or comments? I, I have a couple of comments, just a couple, uh, this is Morelos, and I wanna thank again all the administrators and staff for all that they have done for, uh, you know, under the circumstances, and, uh, and I know all board members appreciate everybody and all the hard work everybody's done for us, the teachers and the principals and for the kids and the cafeteria workers with the, with the lunches and breakfasts and stuff. I appreciate you all and thank you again, okay?
This is Suzie, I appreciate everyone.
Any more comments, questions?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, number five, public forum, N A, six, Board of Education issues, uh, Dr. Lucas?
There are none.
None, okay. Number seven, consent agenda, approval of accounts payable and payroll liability transactions. Uh, does anybody have any questions on some, on many of these? Be sure and ask Dr. Lucas. I have one, Dr. Lucas, uh, twenty-five-nine-five-four.
That was, uh, to repair the elevator at Central?
So that's still, uh, working now? I was wondering about that. I figured that's what it was, but I didn't know if you had to have it on, I guess, for liability?
Oh, yeah, I guess because the.
Okay. Um, I have two more highlights. Twenty-six-oh-two-nine. And the one underneath it, twenty-six-oh-three-zero.
Uh, oh-nine is bus, uh, bus driver?
Okay.
Well, let's see.
It's a feeder rope.
Is that what it is? Okay.
For bus driver, and then what's another one?
Uh, twenty-six-oh-three-zero, right underneath the, the.
Same thing. Same thing.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Anybody else have any questions?
This is Suzie, I have one. I have one question.
Go ahead.
Um, two-five-nine-five-eight.
Um, that is, uh, in our maintenance department, we're gonna put in a lift that can lift, you know, vehicles up in the air if they can do their own maintenance.
Oh, okay.
Scissor lift for the maintenance department. Like a car lift, car deck, except it's, you know, one of the big ones, like in a garage.
Thank you.
Dr. Lucas, and mine is right underneath Suzie's. Um, it's, uh, it, the reissued check. Do you know why it was redone?
Uh, well, it's, uh, open P O.
Oh.
I guess they didn't cash it, maybe. Uh, I'm not sure. You know, Brian? On two-five-nine.
Who's the vendor?
Smith Ford.
Uh, Smith Ford.
Yeah, I think either it, it, it just never got cashed, and then when we followed up, they said they didn't receive it, so we just cut them any check and voided the previous one.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was one of the dings on our audit was not following, so you know, we had checks that were un-cashed for too long a time.
Failed, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's my only reason for questioning it.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions?
No, sir.
If not, I'll, I'll make, I'll accept the motion to approve accounts payable and payroll liability transactions as written.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Gomez, is there a second?
This is Suzie, I'll second.
Second by Ms. Cole. Uh, Ms. Eskivell?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries. The approval of budget adjustment request.
So if, if we can prove there's not a specific budget adjustment request, we would like to ask that we have a blank, Brian, if you could explain that a little better, um, we need a budget request, otherwise we'll have to have special board meetings.
So just so everyone knows, so there's, there's some deadlines coming up that are gonna happen before our next board meeting, and usually around this time of the year, we'll start to clean up the budget as far as making sure that we're not over budget on any particular functions, for example, things like get his audit findings. And so rather than call a special session for every time I have to clean up a budget by moving budget from one line to another, uh, this would just kind of give me, and Dr. Lucas' approval to where if I need to do a maintenance bar for move budget from one line to another, just because one's over, one's under, that we can go ahead and proceed with that, and at the next board meeting, I'll, to everyone, all the budget adjustment requests that we did. Um, it's just so that we can kind of move forward with cleaning up the general ledger and not have to do any special sessions, just to approve bars for that reason. Um, typically, we do this around the kind of, you kind of make it easier for everyone. It's not gonna affect anything as far as spending goes, you know, we're not gonna spend any more money or anything. It's just gonna be moving the budget that we have available to places where maybe we need to have increased budget just so that we can avoid audit findings at the end of the fiscal year.
This is Morelos, and you'll have the black and white for us, right, for the next meeting, so we can look at them all?
Anything, but anything that will, that I put as a budget adjustment for the year until next meeting, I'll, I'll, I'll have all summarized and you all can review at the next meeting.
Okay, any questions, comments from the board?
And it is entirely up to y'all. I mean, it's, um.
We could do special sessions if you like, but it, it can be, basically, June first is the first deadline, and then June fifteenth is another deadline, and so I might have a budget adjustment request that I might need to get in, you know, soon, and it will just be, I don't, I'm, I mean, I'll try to do it with those special sessions, but I can't promise that I will be bugging you guys to approve the bars, so I can get some of our bars done and whatnot.
Right, right. Would you be able to, just for transparency, not that I don't trust you or anything, but can you just, like, maybe email us the day that you do one?
Sure.
Just.
Yeah, and I would have to sign off on them as well, so anytime I sign off on one, I can forward you that email.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would feel, I would feel more comfortable like that.
Sure, sure.
This is Suzie. I agree with Edgar. I feel more comfortable as well.
Okay.
If there's anything significant, I'll definitely, before me and Dr. Lucas push forward, then we'll just bring everyone, and if we need to do a special session, we'll do it. That way you guys can look at it more closely if needed.
Good point. Alyssa, any, any comment?
No. I, 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 whatever the board wants, um, this is my first budget, uh, so, um, whatever you guys want, special sessions, black and white, email, um, it's up to you guys. I, you know, again, I don't know, this is my first one, so.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, I think, like, we can live with what Edgar brought up, and, uh, if you can do that for us, Dr. Lucas and Brian will, will accept that. So is there a motion to approve, uh, the budget adjustment request from Brian, so that he can get on with it, and he'll email us to let us know what's going on?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Gomez, is there a second?
This is Suzie. I'll go ahead and second that, was what Edgar suggested.
Second by Ms. Cole. Ms. Eskivell?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Myself, Morelos, aye. Motion carries. Discussion items, number nine, action items, Dr. Lucas?
Yeah, so first up will be, uh, Brian with the discussion and approval of the budget. He does have a presentation or a PDF for us.
Let me try to. Yeah, let me know if this doesn't work.
We can see it.
All good?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so this is gonna be the budget for our fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, uh, and so what I've prepared here is just a quick budget packet that's gonna go over some of the highlights, um, changes from this year to the last year, and then we'll kind of go through some more detail as far as the budget, as far as revenues and expenditures. If at any time anyone has any questions, you know, don't hesitate, just, just stop me and I'll, I'll do my best to answer them. Um, so just so everyone knows on the board, uh, Freddie, uh, and the Budget Committee, Dr. Lucas, Ryan, and myself, we've met, uh, last Friday and last Monday, uh, we had Budget Committee meetings in which we kind of just talked about some of the, the big picture items, and kind of went over just maybe some overall, you know, top-down views of kind of what the budget's gonna look for from, look like next year. And so I'm gonna go ahead and just kind of go through some of these changes, and, and if, like I said, if anyone has any questions, let me know. So just a quick overview, we were able to, uh, balance the budget without using any cash carryover uh, with major changes to the funding formula, and of course uncertainties related to COVID-nineteen. Uh, we focused on just basically providing the statutory raises as our main goal. Uh, just so everyone's aware, the statute, uh, this last legislative session was a four percent average increase amongst all employees. Uh, some key things to note here, S E G, uh, we did get about a four-point-five-seven percent increase in our S E G. Uh, some other things to note, medical insurance, uh, went up, that's about eight-point-seven percent now for the high option, uh, two-point-one percent for the low option. Other things that affect our budget that everyone should be aware of, the small school size continues to decrease, uh, with twenty percent each year, kind of slowly phasing out. A good thing that happened at this budget or this legislative session was they did increase our at-risk index, uh, which was, resulted in about a sixteen-point-seven-nine percent increase from what we got in the prior year uh, in dollars that resulted in about fifty-six thousand dollars extra this year compared to the prior year. Another key thing to note is we continue to phase out our T and E, going from a T and E multiplier to a T C I. What that is, is in the past, we used to get a multiplier based off of the training and experience of our teachers, and now it's for, it's more focused on level of licensure. And so every year, that continues to phase out at about twenty-five percent each year to where this is, I think, year two, so now we're fifty-fifty, so two more years will be a hundred percent T C I, and the T and E will go away. That resulted in a decrease of about nineteen thousand dollars, uh, in next year's budget. And so we're trying to be proactive on that, and just, you know, the, the things that you can do to try to mitigate that decrease is, is try to focus on incentivizing your teachers to increase level of licensure, which of course, you know, with the minimum salaries, which I'll have on this next slide, uh, does incentivize the teachers to do. So here's some key things to note that was used in the preparation of the budget. E R B is fourteen-point-one-five percent, uh, four percent increase for all employees, like I said. And then here's the minimum, uh, salaries for the teachers based off of the level of licensure, so there is some incentive for them to go from a level one to a level two and two to three, et cetera. Uh, and so, you know, we continue to encourage that just to kind of help not only our students and our teachers, but then also it helps the district in, in kind of preparing for that T and E phase out. Counselors' minimum salary, sixty thousand, and then I have here the principals broken out with high school, middle school, and elementary. And then lastly, we did use a nine-dollar minimum wage, which will increase to ten dollars and fifty cents effective January first, twenty-twenty-one. Here I have a little summary, and so the overall budget for the district is ten million, eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand. I have a projected revenues at the time of me putting this together was about eight-point-eight million, which included the increase in our S E G of about four-point-five-seven percent, or two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, I'm expecting and budgeting to carry cash of about two-point-two million, and so that's all funds, keep that in mind. And so on the, on the right, I have a pie chart, and it kind of breaks out between our general fund, our special revenue, and our capital and debt service, and so general fund, that's basically our operations, our transportation, athletics. One thing to note with that is in the past, we would have instructional materials that would be part of that operating or that general fund. That is now gone. Well, I guess it was gone last year, but they ended up funding this for instructional materials in the current year anyways. For F Y twenty-one, they moved the instructional material allocation basically as part of our S E G. And so in part of this budget, I did have budget basically instructional materials to come out of our operating fund, where in the past, it would have its own separate fund that would be used strictly for instructional materials. So one thing to note on that. Overall, about sixty-two percent of our total budget's allocated to either operating transportation or athletics. Special revenue funds consist of money that we get from the, uh, federal government and state government. That's about one-point-eight million. Capital projects would be our bond funds, our S P nine. Um, that's a big decrease from the prior year, which is expected because, you know, we had some big projects that we've done over the last two, three years. Uh, and going forward, I think the only, we just had our new bond of seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which we're, we're planning to do some work on, and, and some of that's encumbered in the current year, so that's why you'll see the three-thirty-seven on there for next fiscal year. And then lastly, our debt service fund, which is just the payment of our bonds, uh, both principal and interest. Next, I'm gonna kind of go over some of the revenues in a little bit more detail, and so I've broken out kind of our operational funds and where those come from. Uh, S E G, of course, is the biggest chunk, and you can see that increased about five percent roughly from the prior year. We also get our tax collections in the operating fund, our transportation allocation, and then, as I mentioned before, you can see the instructional materials going away, and so now that forty-three thousand that we got last year, you know, technically is gonna be included in our S E G for this current, or for next fiscal year. Some of the big items in our federal flow-through funds is, of course, our Title I, our I D A B, uh, our education of the homeless, Title IV. One thing that I was able to add into your guys' budget that I haven't been able to do, because this is new, is the CARES Act, and so just so the board is aware, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, the Department of Education for, uh, the United States kind of announced a stimulus package to state and local governments, uh, specifically geared towards education and the CARES Act, and basically what it is, is it's a funding that's gonna be passed through the state to each district based off of the amount of Title I money that the district would receive, and so what that resulted for us was about two-hundred-and-six thousand dollars. One of the nice things about this CARES Act money is that they've kind of been pretty lenient as far as the requirements on what you need to spend that money on, whereas it's not gonna be as strict or stringent as normal Title I. It does have some leeway, so it is gonna come in pretty helpful next year, and so, um, I'm working with Dr. Lucas to kind of work on this application, so that will be presented to you guys. I don't think at this meeting, but in a future meeting, and basically, we had two options. We could either try to budget. And basically, we had two options. We could either try to budget for it this year and try to spend it down, or we could budget for next fiscal year, and so we're going with the next fiscal year, um, to budget. Yes, absolutely.
And that, that is the next discussion item is that CARES Act that.
Okay, okay.
E S S E R?
Yes. Okay, great, great. So we'll go over that a little bit more, but that, that I did include in this budget, so that, that's nice. Uh, the other funds, so we have our food service, athletics, Medicaid. Um, I did mention our debt service, S P nine, and then of course our bonds. And then just some little grants like the fresh fruit and vegetables, uh, that we get. And so here I've done a comparison. This is basically comparing our S E G from the current year to the prior year. And so I've kind of, this is coming off of our nine ten V five, which is the funding formula that the states use to calculate the S E G or the operating money for each school. And I've kind of taken the different, uh, key, uh, key lines on that nine ten V five to kind of show where the increases and decreases come from. So on the far left on the actual, I have two columns, which is the prior year and the current year. The numbers represented in there represent membership. Uh, and also I guess what the multiplier was. So for example, that staff cost multiplier, you can see one point oh four six. That was basically the T and E and the T C I for that year. And then I have it compared to the current, um, or to next fiscal year, and you can see the difference in membership, which overall is pretty, pretty much the same. The program units, the next side on the middle, is basically taking those membership numbers and then multiplying them by whatever factor or multiplier is included in the funding formula to get basically what the state calls program units. And so, uh, there's certain factors and certain multipliers for each of these different line items. And taking that membership number from the actual multiplying it or adding it by the funding formula, this, that gives us our program units, and you can see we did have about a thirteen point seven increase overall in program units. And then lastly, I have our program dollars, which is gonna take those program units and multiply it by the unit value. And so I have on the very top row, I have the unit value from current year, which is four thousand six hundred and two dollars. And then I have the unit value that's projected for next fiscal year, which is four thousand seven fifty-eight. So they increased the unit value by about a hundred and fifty-six dollars or three point three nine percent. And then down below that, you can see the dollar amounts associated with what we got in the prior year using that unit value and the current year using the new unit value. And then the difference column will kind of show you the increases and decreases as to where the funding, you know, either increased or decreased. And so really, the only things to pay attention to on, on this is we did have, uh, a large increase on the, the at-risk. Um, we did decrease on the elementary P E. And then we did have, it looks like fewer membership numbers in our special ed, which kind of resulted in some decreases overall. But overall, we've got about four point five seven percent more in our S E G than what we did in the prior year. That's it for the revenues, and so now I'm gonna kind of go over some of the expenditures, and so uh, as I said at the beginning of the presentation, we were able to balance the budget without using any of our cash carryover. Uh, we're continuing to accumulate our fund balances in S P nine and just kind of build up those balances so that we can use them for repairs and maintenance or, or rainy day. Um, in the pie chart I have below, I do have the expenditures broken out by function code. And so function kind of gives you an idea of where or what kind of project that money is being used on. And so this pie chart is just on the operational fund, and so you can see that instruction makes up fifty-five percent and a classroom eleven percent. So out of our total operational budget, about sixty-six percent of that operational budget is being spent, spent on the classroom. Uh, so following that, which is actually really good, that, you know, it's kind of where we wanted to be and that's higher than where it's been in the past, and so they continue to put more money towards the classroom, which is good. And then we have our administration making up twenty percent, building and plants, twelve percent, and then just other expenditure costs of two percent. Um, I do break out the cash carryover by fund. Uh, at the top, you can see operational, I'm expecting about a six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar cash carryover. We have our bond money that we haven't spent down. And then there's some federal funds that allow us to carry over cash like Medicaid. And then, of course, we get to carry our cash and our S P nine and our debt service. So next I have the expenditures by function for all funds, and so this is not just operating, this is everything. And I've compared the prior year to the current year, so you can kind of see the increases and decreases by function, so you can see the big jump in instruction. Um, and you know, honestly, the first three functions, instruction, classroom, support, and administration, uh, you can really attribute those increases to basically the four percent raises and the increases in benefits that we have to spend. Um, it's, it's kind of the main reason for those. Uh, central services, building a plant and other, you can kind of see all went down a little bit. What I would attribute those to is, is completion, especially the, the other is the completion of some of our big projects that we spent, um, or paid off in the current year that we don't anticipate having next fiscal year, such as the field house. It's kind of the reason why you'll see those big decreases of those, uh, in those bars. So next, I have the expenditures by object code. So this is a little bit more detailed as to tell you like what exactly the expenditures are being spent on. Uh, the top, I have the object code by, for the operational fund. And so you can see that seventy-one percent of our operational money is being spent on compensation and benefits with eleven percent on contract services, four percent survives, and then fourteen percent on property, uh, like repairs and maintenance. And then down below, again, I have the expenditures by object for all funds to kind of show you where the funding is being spent across your district-wide. Um, and like I mentioned on the last slide, the property can see go down and that's, that's due to those projects having been completed. And then the debt service going up, uh, we do have that new bond, uh, that we sold, I believe, uh, last year, and then the seven fifty that we just sold, uh, so that's kind of the increase in the debt service payments right there. Next, I'll go over some of our personnel costs to kind of give you an idea of the F T Es, the salaries and benefits, and so on this table, I have broken out by the different, um, in functions, instruction, support, administration, and then other. You can kind of see the F T Es of the district, uh, the salaries associated with those, benefit costs associated with those, and of course, the total cost, uh, of those salaries and benefits. Overall, the F T Es this year are, are pretty much the same as the prior year. No big changes in F T Es. Uh, I have our stipends, so basically our supplemental income, um, we do give athletics, uh, you know, when I first saw that number, I was like, why is that number so big? To, I, I don't know if you guys will have that same question, but basically there's a lot of, uh, teachers, uh, or coaches that kind of get, you know, two thousand here or two thousand there for different sports. Uh, added up, it, it, it does come out to about a hundred and sixteen thousand in athletic stipends that we pay. Uh, and then, of course, we have some other small stipends like our C P O, uh, yearbook, um, just kind of, and this is all pretty much the same as last year as well. No big changes on the stipends. And then I have three categories. I have our non-personnel cost, our one-time contracts, and then some other costs. And so this is just kind of giving you a snapshot of basically expenditures that are non-salaries and benefits, and so um, I have basically all of our one-time contracts and down below, our one, our non-personnel cost is kind of uh, the things that we pay month to month. And then lastly, our other cost, which is basically everything else that's not salaries and benefits or monthly or, or one-time contracts. And then lastly, I have our fund balance, and so you can kind of see here, year over year, you know, we're, we're doing pretty good. And one of the things I mentioned to Dr. Lucas when I worked on this budget is I believe that Lord'sburg is the only school that I currently have with my company that did not have to use cash carryover to balance their budget this year. I believe every other school that I had did have to use some form of cash carryover to balance the budget. Um, and as you can see, you know, we're, we're keeping a healthy fund balance, we're, we're, we did really good this year, and so I think this is, of course, a projection, and so this can change based off of the expenditures that we do um, from today to the end of the year. But given what I currently see in the system, this is what I'm projecting this to finish the fiscal year at. And it's kind of nice to have this little cushion just in case, for whatever reason, there's a special session and, and we need to make some changes. We do have, uh, some funding there that we can kind of help mitigate those, uh, potential changes that we might have to incur if there is a special session or a reduction in funding, for example. So not included on these slides, but I did email everyone. I do have let me see if I can pull it up. Can you guys still see my screen? I hope so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I did email this to Dr. Lucas and Rosa and Ryan, and so they can send these to you also, but included in the included in the budget packet, which is not in my PowerPoint, I do have a copy of the nine ten V five, so this is the funding formula that I was talking about. And then followed by our school calendar, which is also on tonight's agenda. Um, but this is in the format that P D requires me to submit the budget. And then lastly, the salary schedules. And so you all can look those over if you like. Uh, just to kind of summarize the salary schedules, basically everything I, I kept the same as in the prior year with the exception of if an employee was in a certain cell and got a four percent increase, then I changed that cell to, to reflect that four percent increase, uh, with all the other cells staying the same, so. And with that is, if anyone has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board? Comments?
My only comment is that I really love the fact that we put more money in, uh, in the classroom and instruction. Um, I think that's really good.
Yeah.
I was gonna say the same thing. I love that it's more into instructional than anything else. That's very important to me.
I agree. Any other questions, comments?
I would, this Steve, I, I would like to say, this budget, when it is approved, remember if legislature goes into special section, session, it may be subject to change. We're hoping it does not, and it should not. I mean, I mean, if it changes, I mean, we do have fund balance, we do have ways we can offset that, but just bear in mind that when we do approve this, it may be subject to change later on down the road after special session, and they, they, they may say, you know, well, we're not gonna fund schools as much as they we thought, so. It is subject to change.
This budget's basically prepared with the numbers that we were given, and so we do need to use those numbers even though we can expect a decrease, but yeah, Dr. Lucas is right, so. So this budget's basically prepared and balanced with the, the funding that they told us that we would get. Uh, for federal funds, you know, I, I was able to get the awards for what was available. For anything that was not available, I just estimated that we would receive the same as what we did this year. And so, you know, there could be small changes here and there, but given the information that we have to work with, um, and our budget deadline submission date coming up at the end of the month, uh, this is the budget using those numbers. And, and so like Dr. Lucas said, that could change and it, and if it does, then we'll probably be meeting and I'll be doing this again and showing you guys an updated slideshow.
Sounds good. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll accept the motion to approve, uh, budget twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one as written.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Gomez, is there a second?
This is Suzie, I'll second.
Second by Ms. Cole. Uh, Mrs. Esquivel?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Morelos?
Aye.
Motion carries? B, Dr. Lucas?
Okay, so this is the CARES Act that, um, E S S E R, I actually, they actually emailed us the application at about six o'clock Thursday night. So I stayed up, filled it out Thursday night, submitted it, because in order for it be able to access the funds and be ready July one, we had to have it approved at the meeting. So we, that application has been filled out, has been submitted. Um, and now we just, you know, it was for two hundred and six thousand dollars, which was about, I stand up our Title I monies. It is a lot easier to spend. Right now, I, uh, we have it set up for, um, thirty thousand dollars. Um, for technology to help boost technology in case we have to go, um, you know, hybrid models, or if we have another bout of extended learning or at-home learning. Um, and then, uh, two hundred thousand, or the balance after the thirty thousand, about a hundred oh seventy-eight thousand, seventy-six thousand, we put for, um, salaries in case the legislature comes back and says we have to reduce, so we have it, so we can support salaries. Um, in the event, you know, to keep people employed and everything else, we can use that. If we see we don't need it in that fund, then we can go back and change it to something else. But as of right now, it's, it's geared towards salaries and technology.
Any questions for Dr. Lucas?
No, sir.
I'll accept the motion to, to pass E S S E R fund application as written by Dr. Lucas.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Gomez, is there a second?
I'll second that motion, Esquivel.
Second by Mrs. Esquivel. Uh, Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Esquivel?
Aye.
Morelos?
Aye.
Motion carries? Uh, item C, Dr. Lucas?
Okay, so this is another, um, grant application, I D A B, which is a district-led for special education, uh, grants and, and this year with carryover from last year is about three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. This pays our special ed's teacher salaries, special ed aid salaries, uh, equipment for special education, supplies, materials, transportation for special education. So when this is one of the federal grants, it has to be approved by the, by the board, the application, uh, before they will approve it for us. The board has to approve it, and it is for three hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven, with the bulk of that going toward special education workers' salaries.
Any questions, comments by the board?
No, sir.
Well, I'll make the motion to, uh, accept the I D E A B application as written by Dr. Lucas. Is there a second?
This is Suzie, I'll second.
Second by Ms. Cole. Uh, Mrs. Esquivel?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Morelos?
Aye.
Motion carries? Uh, D, Dr. Lucas?
So the school calendar for next year, again, this is probably tentative. We do not have formal direction from the state as to how school will look next year. But if it is a normal school year, this is the calendar we've come up with for that. Um, but again, we don't know what the start of school is actually gonna look like until the Fed tells us. So we're planning on, I have the principals working with their teachers, planning on two or three different scenarios, you know, either entirely online or a hybrid model or regular session, so, um, tentatively, this is our schedule we would like to have approved.
Dr. Lucas, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, one thing that I noticed was a lot of parents that were going picking up their kids either from the D T M S or, or the R V T and then having to rush to get to the other school and stuff like that because the, the hour for both schools to get out was exactly at the same time. Um, is there any way that we might be able to work on something like that?
We, we can, but, but that wouldn't necessarily be the calendar, that would just be something we did. You know, through transportation, just trying to set something up. Um, and, and used to R V T, when I was there, would get out like fifteen minutes before. But by the time the buses got there, I think there were some issues, and I know Adam wanted to increase the release time, same as everybody else. But we can look at going back or trying to get it where it's a smoother, smoother start.
If everyone else is okay with that, that's just some of the things that I was hearing from some of the parents, uh, that they were rushing, especially to get the, the, the little kids.
Right.
Yeah, I heard the same thing.
Okay. Okay, so we can look at, uh, Okay, so we can look at, uh, we can look at that next year, but again, that's not part of the school calendar as far, because the calendar doesn't have start times or end times on it.
Right.
Got it, sorry about that.
That's right, and we just have to make sure that the minutes still meet the state standards.
Good point taken though, Mr. Gomez. Uh, any questions or comments on the calendar? I think we can accept it as is, like he says, under the circumstances, so let's see what happens.
So are they, this is Susie, I'm sorry. Are they going to be making up any Fridays? Because as far as I can tell, it doesn't look like it.
What do you mean making up?
So like if they're off on a, on a Monday and they'll have to go to school on a Friday, I don't see that this year.
Yeah, we tried to kind of fix that in the schedule. So it may be, they've noticed we're starting in July, I think. So, you know, the first day for new teachers, um, is July thirty-first. We're kind of starting a little earlier and spreading it out, so we've tried to avoid that. Where it's, you know, um, in a way, it almost, I won't say it punishes them for having a holiday, but it's really not a holiday when they just take it away at the other end.
Right.
Yeah.
I like it, I like.
I, I do, I do too, because I was comparing the two calendars, the ones, this year's calendar to the new calendar, and I noticed that that way they're not having to make up that day on a, they take a Monday, they go back on a Friday, so I like that.
I agree, I agree, I like the consistency of it, that way people could also plan.
Right.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll accept the motion to approve, uh, school calendar for twenty twenty twenty-one?
This is Susie, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Cole, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Gomez, uh, Mrs. Kivert?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Morelos, aye. Motion carries? Uh, E, discussion and approval of transportation contractor contract, Dr. Lucas?
Again, this is pretty standard, you should have a copy of it in there, um, it's basically for, um, about a hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, rights, hundred and seventy-nine, nine oh seven, um, that we pay the contractors for buses and their services, um, annually. Um, so this is a contract we do, uh, every year.
Any questions for Mr., for Dr. Lucas on this?
No, sir, I, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll accept that motion by, uh, Mr. Gomez to accept the transportation contractor contract, is there a second?
This is Alyssa, I'll second that motion.
Uh, second by Mrs. Kivert, uh, Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Kivert?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Morelos, aye. Motion carries? F, discussion and approval of open meetings resolution?
Again, this is, uh, just a resolution stating that we'll follow basically the Open Meetings Act and notice, uh, something we do every year. And it just gives us guidelines for board meetings, special meetings, uh, and we have meetings, emergency meetings or post-division meetings, just kind of describes our procedures. You know, what we need to do.
Any questions, comments by the board?
Mr. Lucas, um, in the future, whenever the school board travels for training or any type of meetings, can we please advertise it on the paper so the school board could stay transparent?
Sure.
Please, if it's not too much to ask for.
No, not at all.
Any other comments?
Anytime we've done, um, on the notices, if there's been three or more traveling, we should have put it in the papers, like there could be a quorum, but.
I think it has gone in as that before.
Right, but if, if only two go, we haven't done, I mean, but it needs to be done every time you say, you know, the school board will be traveling.
Oh, if, if there's a, if there's a quorum, I would just say, just, um, I want to make sure the, like, you know, that we stay transparent to the people.
Right, right, okay.
I think everybody can live with that, sir. Is there a motion to, uh, accept the open meetings resolution as written?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Gomez, is there a second?
This is Susie, I'll make that motion, that second.
Second by Ms. Cole, uh, Mrs. Kivert?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Uh, this is Morelos, aye. Motion carries? G, discussion and approval of audit proposal, Dr. Lucas?
Right, we, we went out for R F P on the, on the auditors. And we had, uh, two bids come in, one was from Stone McGee and Company out of Silver, and the other was from Beasley Mitchell and Company out of Los Cruces. Uh, the Beasley was five thousand dollars cheaper over the course of three years. Um, and doing the rubric, there was only three points difference between the two. We went with, or my recommendation or our recommendation, the committee recommendation was for Stone McGee, mainly because of our prior experience with them and the relationship that has been built up over the years with them. Um, you know, it's just easier when they're in Silver. Plus they provided, even though they're five thousand dollars different, they're providing a lot more hours devoted to our district than the other company. I mean, they're, they're about twice as many hours working with us, what the other company would be.
Any questions, comments?
I agree with, with you, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you.
Uh, me too, Dr. Lucas, I've had experience with Stone and McGee and I really like them, I have no problems with them.
Okay.
Neither, I think they're very reputable.
Yes.
Especially the, I think if we really need them or something, they're just not too far away where.
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
Likewise, okay, so is there a motion to accept the audit proposal as written and recommended by Dr. Lucas?
I'll make that motion to accept Stone and McGee.
Motion by Ms. Cole, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Kivert, Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mrs. Kivert? Mrs. Kivert?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Morelos, aye. Motion carries? Uh, I think this is it, guys, with all, uh, agenda items taken care of, this meeting is adjourned. Everybody stay safe, please, and thanks for your cooperation and your help. Any questions, call Dr. Lucas or myself and we'll get in touch with you if we need help, so, thanks.